To our City Council meeting, all those who are watching it on TV. We're going to start off with a prayer, and I've asked Councilman Argal if he can give that to us.
Our dear Father in heaven, we humbly bow our heads before thee this evening as we meet here as the council of Spanish Fork City. We ask thy Spirit upon us as we discuss the needs of this city and our citizens that we may do so in a pleasing manner, that we may conduct the business of the city and take care of those issues presented to us. We're grateful for this wonderful city that we live in and the opportunity we have to serve. And we ask these things in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I've asked Councilman Gordon to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Would the audience please rise? Please repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is a pretty awesome thing. Swearing in a new police officer. Chief, you want to talk to us about this?
So we had one of our officers move back to where his family was in the Wyoming area. So he moved back there and we had an opportunity to open up a position here in Spanish Fork. And we had several people that applied. Luckily, we are one of the agencies across the state that people like to work for, and we have good applicants pulled to choose officers from. Wyatt Go-forth was one of those officers that applied. He has had a desire to be a police officer for quite some time. As a matter of fact, he's worked for the city in another capacity for a while. And while he was doing that, he put himself through the academy. So on his own volition, on his own dime, he sought after what he wanted and got it. So he's been on the force now for...
Two weeks.
Two weeks. And he is the best driver already. We had some emergency vehicle operations training, and I think...
Somebody beat him.
Oh, somebody beat him. But there was a portion of that test where you back your vehicle up through some cones and not hit cones, and then try to get a good time. And Wyatt had some really good time there, but apparently how... Who was the one that beat you?
Corey Lewis.
Corey Lewis beat him. And Corey, I think he's got about seven or eight years. So maybe in seven or eight more years Wyatt can take Corey on again, try it again. But we're really excited to have Wyatt work for us. Again, he did work for the city before. All of his supervisors before and coworkers gave him accolades, and he did very well in the interviews and the testing process. And we welcome him aboard. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind swearing in with the oath of office.
Be honored to. What do you want to do? You want to just come stand right here so we can get you on TV so those 5 million people can see you? There you go. All right. So just repeat after me here. Raise your right hand. Aye, say your name.
Aye, Wyatt Go-forth.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Great. Congratulations, welcome to the force.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Mayor. Appreciate you. Oh, you got to come shake everybody's hand.
Well, I'm not sure we should.
Oh, that's right. Give him a bump. Sorry. Old habits, old habits. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Love doing those kind of things. All right. Let's move to public comments. Anyone from the public that'd like to address the mayor and the city council? You're welcome to come up here. You have three minutes. And state your name and go ahead. All right. If not, I've got a request from Tyler Jacobson. So Tyler, would you mind coming and...
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to introduce to the public our new public information officer and management analyst, Nick Porter. So Nick comes to us just recently graduated from BYU's MPA program. He won't tell you this, but he was voted by his professors and I believe even fellow classmates as the student of the year in the program. And also served as an intern at Clearfield City and also in South Ogden. We'll see if I get this stuff right about him. And then one of the great things about Nick is he's got a lot of experience when it comes to public relations. He was in charge of all of Southern Virginia University's athletic public information. And so he marketed all their athletic programs while he was going to school out there. So anyway, we're grateful to have Nick. Nick, you want to say anything?
Just excited to be here. So thank you for making me a part of your city. So the family moves down in a week and a half, so then we'll all be here.
That's awesome. Welcome.
Thank you.
That'll be great. Okay. Let's go to council comments. Council member Beck.
Thanks, Councilman Scopes, for your readers tonight. I left mine at home, and I wouldn't have been able to see. First things, we have a new Miss Spanish Fork 2020. It's Azure Ray Talbot. If Talbot sounds familiar, it's because her older sister is currently serving as Miss Utah for the second year. They delayed the Miss Utah competition, and that'll be next year. So Azure Ray will serve as the Miss Spanish Fork 2020. First attendant is Brooklyn Murray. And it was a really great night. Scholarships were given to those who competed in the Miss Spanish Fork competition, and we appreciate their time there. Last night, we had a Fiesta Days logistics meeting. I just want to refer, we get a lot of questions about Fiesta Days. If you go to the website, look at the calendar, it's updated regularly. We're going to wait until the end of the month until the governor makes his next directive so we know how we can move forward. So hopefully by July 1st, we'll have a little bit more direction to give. So we're kind of at a standstill right now, but hopefully we'll be moving forward. And then real quick, if I can share three positive stories. Last time in our city council comments, we had someone ask about just community relations in our city, and I wanted to share three positive things. Recently, the Spanish Fork High School football team had two of their former players come and talk to them about their experiences growing up in Spanish Fork and not being white. Both Isaac Asiata and Richard Wilson went to play college football. Isaac ended up playing in the NFL on the Dolphins team. He retired and now is a Provo police officer. Their topic that night with the players was racism, brotherly love, and educating ourselves on how others may or may not feel about what's going on in the world and just being good people. They said, "Take the opportunity to rise above." The second story is from Lieutenant Corey Slaymaker. He shared with me last night that nearly every day for the past three weeks, the Spanish Fork Police Department has been given pizza or cookies and brownies nearly every single day. He said that there is such an outpouring of love and support from our residents and our community. And so I asked him if I could just extend an appreciation from the Spanish Fork Police Department to our residents. They appreciate your support and love. And then the third thing is just that I'm personally hearing so many stories happening in the walls of our own homes. Conversations are happening at a level they haven't in the past. Awareness about our differences and being recognized and appreciated, hopefully from our homes that will expand into our schools, churches, neighborhoods, and businesses. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Scopes.
Mayor, the only thing I have is just to dovetail with what Councilmember Beck mentioned, to see Officer Go-forth grow up. It's fun to see the youth of our community grow and become an active part in the growth and the development of our community. And so again, Wyatt, congratulations. Just, I'm tickled pink. You can't see it, but it really is neat to be able to see him as an elementary student and then just, I mean, really, is, you know, all the good things that our community has and are doing. The growth and education taking place amongst all of us in these times, but especially in our youth. They say that our youth are our future, and clearly Wyatt, you're a great example of that. And so just really appreciate you and your family and your future service to our community. So excited to still have you here in Spanish Fork. That's all.
Councilman Gordon.
I had an opportunity to go drive the course after you did, Wyatt. And I'll have you know, I broke your record. But the problem was Chief said you're not supposed to hit cones. And so apparently that deducts from your time. But Chief wasn't in here when I just made that comment, so it has to be on the record that I beat Wyatt's time. But I only clipped a couple of cones, was all I was trying to say.
You clipped a couple of cones.
Yeah. But we're thrilled to have you, and we're thankful for your service. We really appreciate that. That's all. I don't have anything, Mayor.
Great. Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, just like to report on a couple of board meetings. Sumoa Board, Water Board met and just conducted business and approved the this year's budget. Also received a request from John Waters and the city to purchase another 500 acre feet of shares water of the ULS, the new pipeline water that's coming to the city, which is a blessing for us to use that. It fills our reservoir with pressure rather than pumping. Also from the airport board, just to let you know that things are still going good forward as they continue to expand and as they get preparation for the FBI to build a new building and some new hangars and things like that. There's some exciting things going on down to the airport. Also, we received from the FAA an approval of our separation from Spanish Fork and Springville. Talked to the mayor about that. They were just waiting on a document to be signed that releases the land to Spanish Fork, and then we'll be able to go forward with that. That's something exciting that we've been waiting to get in here from, and it looks like we're on the last leg of that. Also, would like to first personally express my appreciation to the Spanish Fork Police Department. In light of all the things that's going on in our nation right now, I'm excited to listen to when Chief Adams talks about the training that our officers continually do and receive to improve themselves, to get better at what they're doing. We had the opportunity to go up there. I had to leave, and then some other things that happened up there didn't. I was so excited to shoot the gun, and I didn't get to. Because they said I could shoot it at somebody. That was exciting to know that, but we didn't get to do that. But anyway, grateful for each one of the officers in this town. For your officers, chief, for your lieutenants, your sergeants, your detectives, and you, and the job that you do, and especially in things going on. It's so exciting to hear of the things that's positive from our community. I want you to know that me and my family are grateful for the things that you do and the public safety in this city. For our EMTs and our firemen are second to none. They do an awesome job keeping us safe, helping us with our medical issues, and all of them do an awesome job at that. I just want you to know, chief, as a councilman, I know there's a lot of conversation and actions that's going on in other communities. I would say that as long as I'm a council and citizen, those conversations won't go on in this community because we are a different community. We do things better, and we prepare better, and we look forward to the future in doing things better. And I just want you to know that my support for the police department, it will always be there. I am grateful for the service that you provide to this community. And I don't see half of what goes on, even when I read the reports that you send to us. I'm sure I don't understand all of the things that you put up with on a daily basis, but grateful for the service that you do for our community and the public safety department that does each and every day. They're out there, no questions asked, and we are grateful to have them as a community. They serve us well as our community grows and continues to go forward. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. One thing I failed to mention a couple of council meetings ago. There was a survey out, and Chief, Spanish Fork was ranked the second safest city in Utah. And so congratulations to you and your officers. The only other city that was safer, I think, was Alpine. So for our size, that was pretty cool, you know? So the residents should know that we've got some great police officers that keeps us safe, and we appreciate that, carrying on with Councilman Argal, what he had to say. And Councilmember Beck, Isaac Asiata ate me out of house and home while he was growing up. You know, he's a good friend of my son, and I coached him in Little League football and every... He's an awesome person. And we need to get him over here to be one of our police officers instead of Provo because he's a great guy. So it's good to see those people grow up here in town and succeed and do well, and we appreciate that, same way with Wyatt. So that's good. That's all I've got. Then let's move on to Spanish Fork 101, APPA National Safety Award, first place.
So Mayor, you're aware of what APPA is, but it's American Public Power. It's an association that we belong to nationally that does training and our safety guidelines that we have to follow as the power department. So with that, we turn in every year our safety record to the organization. They review it. And this last year, we received a first place from the National Organization for Safety as part of our program. So they're late getting us plaques, but this is one we've won in the past. But because of COVID, they didn't hold the convention where they pass these out, and they haven't got them mailed out to us yet. But we received one for 2019 from APPA. The other one that we're proud of is IPSA is our apprenticeship training and training program that everybody goes through. And with that one, we have gone 10 years consecutively without a lost time accident. And we're in Group C. We're in Group C category in APPA and IPSA, which is 30,000 man-hours up to 60,000 man-hours worked during a year without a lost time accident. That's not to say we haven't had a few fender benders and a couple of things in the city, but an expensive lost time accident or an electrical accident, we've been 10 years straight without a major accident in the city. So pretty recognizable to this group. These are our foreman and assistant superintendent. We didn't want to bring the whole department in with COVID and stuff, but just wanting to recognize our department for their efforts in safety and training. And the lineman trade used to be in the top 10 for hazardous jobs. In about the last 10 years, that has changed, and we've dropped out of the top 10 because of all the safety and training that we go through now. So just wanted to make you aware of our department, some of the things we've done, and the recognition we've gotten from our department on a national and a state level. So thank you.
They got a smile. They don't know how. Thank you. Once again, we've got great employees here that works for Spanish Fork, and it's an honor to go back to these conventions and have these honors given to us. I'm a little bummed this year that we didn't have our convention this year to go back and get recognized. But hey, we do what we got to do. So thank you, Kelly, and all your group, and for all they do. All right. Consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's go to public hearing.
A few years ago, UDOT purchased some property to realign the intersection with 3400 East and US Highway 6. It's a T-intersection on the north side of US 6. You can kind of get a little bit of a sense maybe for where it's at from this image here, although that's not the best. Do you guys have a feel for where we're talking about? How they straightened it out to have the road from the north come in perpendicular to the railroad tracks and the highway, made it quite a bit safer? And in fact, they plan on realigning the leg from the south as well. They've purchased property for that and intend to do that sometime in the next few years. When they purchased that property, they created a new parcel that's about 2 and 1/2 acres in size that currently is not in Spanish Fork. And for various reasons, about three months ago, we have felt like it was the right time to go ahead and have that property annexed into the city. It's owned by UDOT. We approached them, asked them if they had any concerns with us going through this process. They don't. And as such, we've been through the formal protest period that's involved with annexations. We haven't had anyone object to the property's annexation. So it comes to you tonight with a recommendation from the Development Review Committee to approve the annexation. The Planning Commission made the same recommendation. The zoning that's proposed follows the center line of 3400 East so that everything on the west side, consistent with the general plan, would be zoned R115. And everything on the east side, consistent with the general plan, would be zoned R3.
This is a public hearing, so I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck and a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the public that would like to come and talk about this annexation? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Quiet Valley Annexation Request.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That passes. Ordinance 06-20, amending the Title 15, Chapter 4 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code relating to Pioneer Agreement, Adequate Water Dedication, Irrigation Ditch, and Reimbursable Projects.
Mayor and council, the ordinance you have tonight does several things. They're mostly minor. The first is to change the term connectors agreements that we've been using to pioneering agreements. The second gives some flexibility with dealing with irrigation ditches that we find when we go to develop a certain, in developer submit applications to develop property. Allowing fencing and walls in addition to piping has different strategies to deal with those. The ordinance also allows cash in lieu of a water dedication so that we can procure the water of the quantity and quality that is good for the city. And then finally, it defines different reimbursable, impact fee reimbursable projects and defines what qualifies for reimbursements. Are there any questions about those kind of miscellaneous changes to the Title 15?
What's the big difference between those two words, connectors and pioneering?
The pioneering agreement is, what I'm familiar with, is more in use throughout the development community and local government. Connectors, it was kind of a new term when I encountered it. And so I think it's just streamlining. It gives the developers an easier understanding of what we're talking about.
Great. Thank you, Ma'am. Since this is a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to come and address us on this issue? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move, we approve ordinance 6-20, amending Title 15, Chapter 4 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code related to pioneering agreements, adequate water dedications, irrigation ditches, and reimbursable projects.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Gordon. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
That passes. Before we move on, as you noticed, we're missing one council member. Councilmember Mendenhall is gone on vacation, and so we want to excuse him, and I'm sure he's having a lot of fun wherever he's at. So, all right, let's move to C. Ordinance 07-20, amending the Title 15, Chapter 4 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code relating to flood damage prevention.
Mayor and council, FEMA is adopting a brand-new set of flood insurance rate maps. That's the map that determines which flood zone you're in and what you would pay for flood insurance. For the city to participate in that national flood insurance program, we have to adopt a new ordinance. They sent every city in the state a notice saying you need to revise your ordinances. So I know all the cities are going through it. The staff has reviewed the proposed ordinance. The ordinance that you have is basically the FEMA draft. Basically, what they said, this will work. And so we've pretty much adopted that proposed language. We tweaked it here and there to match the formatting and the layout of our ordinances, but it's basically their recommended version. The staff recommended it, and the DRC and the Planning Commission did as well. Do you have any questions about the flood damage prevention ordinance?
We might have to do that in public hearing. So thank you. This is public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the public that would like to address this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments on this?
Just a comment from the insurance world. As I've discussed this over the years with Chris Thompson, it saved the residents of Spanish Fork hundreds of thousands of dollars of premiums of the flood insurance, which... Spanish Fork hundreds of thousands of dollars of premiums of the flood insurance, which is kind of, I don't know how I should dare say that, Seth is looking at me funny, but we rarely see people around here pay out on flood insurance, and so it's, I just didn't want to use the term wasted money. But, so, and I applaud the city as I ensure other people in other communities, neighboring communities, that the city doesn't go to these lengths, and it's really, it's really saving our residents a lot of money in premiums. They're still, they're still able to buy it, but they're not forced to by their lender as a requirement if the flood map just has one foot of their property in the flood plain, flood zone. So, kudos to staff and for looking at these maps and constantly doing the things that helps mitigate our flood plain. It's a big deal. And with that, I'll make, I'll move that this ordinance be adopted, ordinance number 07-20, an ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 4 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code related to flood damage prevention.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. This also is a roll call vote. Councilmember Beck. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
That passes. Ordinance 08-20, amending the Title 15, Chapter 4 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code relating to conceptual review requirements submission for zoning maps, amendments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Go ahead, Dave.
That's perfect. Thank you, Mayor. This is a combination of some changes that were initiated by city staff as well as the result of an application that was made by one of our residents. I'll just touch generally on the main parts of what's proposed. First of all, the language would create a process that would give both potential applicants and city staff a chance to review concepts for different developments in a more formal and organized way than what's been available in the past, with the idea that that would allow applicants to use their time and resources efficiently as well as city staff's time efficiently, as we're able to give developers more informed feedback on development ideas in a more organized way, a little bit earlier in the development review process than what we're currently able to do. Another part of the proposed text amendments involves requirements that we have for masonry walls. In certain situations today, when a property develops, we require a masonry wall to be constructed on the boundary line between that property and neighboring properties. There are several different things that trigger that requirement. The language that's proposed here would, in very limited circumstances, give the Development Review Committee the opportunity to consider requiring something other than a masonry wall to delineate between two different properties at a property line. The last change that is proposed by city staff actually comes to you with the recommendation that it not go forward from the Planning Commission. That involves potentially changing how we organize neighborhood meetings, meetings that are held as developments are going through the development review process. We as staff have recommended that that process be changed in a pretty dramatic way to where we would no longer require developers to have the responsibility to hold such a meeting, with the idea that instead, city staff would arrange to somehow get information to neighbors about particular developments that might be happening, you know, within some vicinity of their properties. And instead of having that language included in Title 15, it simply would be a matter of city policy. But again, with that coming to you with the recommendation to hang on to it from the Planning Commission, that's something that we're very comfortable with as city staff. They asked us to do some research into different ways that we maybe would keep neighbors of potential developments informed, maybe give them opportunity to share thoughts and concerns as a project goes through the development review process. And I think they had some good suggestions for us. We've done a little bit of research since the Planning Commission meeting, and we'd expect to present to them in their July meeting what our, I guess I would say, more refined recommendations are as to how we administer a process that would be different than how we've handled things in the past. So, that's in essence the changes that staff is recommending that you consider there with that language. Then, like I mentioned, McKenna and Kim Hall have applied to have the zoning text amended to allow for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, in certain zoning districts where they're not currently permitted. So, this would expand just from a zoning perspective where somebody would be allowed to have an accessory apartment in Spanish Fork. You might remember that when the changes were adopted about this time last year, to expand that very same thing where people could have accessory apartments in Spanish Fork, we stopped with a certain zoning district and at that point in time, didn't allow accessory apartments, for example, in some of our zones that require pretty good-sized lots, like half-acre lots, three-quarter acre lots, full acre lots, and that type of a thing. And frankly, I think that was probably a mistake. I don't see any reason, just from my perspective, from a land use regulatory point of view, to not allow accessory apartments on properties where people have more space to work with and that type of a thing. You probably could even argue that we should look at it from the other perspective, right? That those properties are even that much more able to functionally accommodate that additional use in connection with a single-family home. Another thing that we talked quite a bit about last year, and I'd maybe say something like I did about the neighborhood meeting changes, I think the council last year, this is my, my understanding of the conclusion that we came to, you came to, was that at that point in time, you didn't feel comfortable as a group with making changes to allow people to have accessory dwelling units that weren't somehow connected to the principal structure of the house on a lot. So, that would be to say that right now, we only allow for accessory apartments and maybe a basement or, you know, in some other part of the home that is connected to the house. Does that make sense? They have to, it has to be that connection, that physical connection. We don't permit, as has been more and more common, I would say throughout the United States, throughout the Western United States, to allow for accessory apartments in structures that aren't attached to the house. And in fact, when we presented the proposal last summer to expand where people can have accessory apartments, we included with that the very language that is before you tonight to allow for, again, accessory apartments in detached structures. So, with the request that again came from McKenna and Kim Hall to expand the opportunities that exist to have accessory apartments in Spanish Fork, we simply resuscitated that language, and that's what's before you tonight. A couple of the provisions that come into play, we do have a maximum height limit that we think makes some sense. We want to still be sensitive, you know, maybe concerns that neighbors might have about now having, you know, what in effect could be viewed as a, as a house in the backyard of another house. We want to make sure that as these accessory dwelling units in detached structures are constructed, that they're, they're done somewhat with some eye to aesthetics and trying to make them in different ways, similar to how the primary home on the property is built, and how maybe it's clad, you know, with the exterior materials and that type of a thing. But you'll see that there's still not a lot of detail relative to the specific requirements that would come into play, either aesthetically or, you know, otherwise for how these structures would need to be built. But again, so those proposed changes to Title 15 come to you with recommendations for approval from both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission, with the exception of that change. In the memorandum that I provided with the agenda, I've highlighted that part that the Planning Commission requested that we hang on to, and I'd ask that you, you not include that with the ordinance that gets approved tonight. And just to reiterate, part of the changes are the result of an application that we received from McKenna and Kim Hall, and I assume they maybe want to take some time to explain their situation, why they think that's a good thing, so.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who would like to come and talk about this? From the public.
You don't have to, but you could if you'd like to.
You have that opportunity. Seeing none, I'll bail her out. I entertain a motion to go out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Or public hearing, excuse me.
I didn't even hear what you said.
I said, I said closed hearing, but we're in public hearing. So, I wanted to correct myself before Vaughn comes over and slaps me. So, I got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments on this particular one?
I have a couple, so. Some of the concerns about a detached property, is that lot size going to be limited in that situation? Some of those things that we talked about was because of garages not being attached, storage units being brought in. I mean, what's gonna keep that from just becoming an apartment in the backyard?
Conceivably, that's what we're talking about.
Right.
Would be converting maybe an existing garage to an apartment, maybe adding to a garage to create living space within it. You know, in all honesty, Happy Days, I was pretty young when people actually watched that, but, you know, right, didn't some guy live above a garage in an apartment?
Yes.
You know, and so, for me, that is kind of what I think about when I think about accessory apartments, particularly detached accessory apartments. A lot of communities in Utah, I think, have done a great job in recent years of really defining what that is and how they can work and how they can be built, and there are many, many different ways that you could have that arrangement created. Some folks bring in modular homes, and that becomes that detached apartment. Again, like I mentioned, there are conversions that happen that make it happen. We've talked to folks that would like to build something from the ground up. Maybe I'll mention this as well, just by way of some other ways that I've viewed the possibilities that come with creating this opportunity. I'm familiar with developments in southern Utah, in St. George, where it's fairly common to have like a guest house in the backyard and that type of thing, relatively small, studio kinds of living arrangements and that sort of a thing. We currently require 8,000 square feet at least for somebody to be able to have an accessory apartment on their property, and we wouldn't suggest that that square footage be reduced at all with this. 8,000 square foot lots in Spanish Fork at least aren't necessarily big lots, I think, if we were to maybe take an average of what exists throughout the community. But that being said, we do have setback requirements, both setbacks from neighboring property lines and setbacks from the house itself that would need to be met. People still would need to meet the parking requirements and those types of things. Like with even an attached accessory apartment, I'll reiterate some things that I think we talked about again last summer. For better or worse, it's not for everybody and it's not for every property. And frankly, we talk to people every week that for different reasons, they can't make it work on their property, whether it's a matter of just the lot size being deficient or not being able to design it, excuse me, not being able to design it to meet the parking requirements or those types of things. We've certainly had plenty of conversations about that. Now, that all being said, we're happy to maybe look at if you feel like some additional regulations might be helpful or anything like that at all. Again, that's pretty common, and I think there's some good examples out there that we could look at if you'd like.
So, Dave, I have a couple of questions. They don't, an accessory apartment doesn't have to go through DRC, but it does say under F that it would have to go through the city community development department?
Yeah.
Who, I don't know if I've ever heard of that. Who's on that?
Well...
Is that you?
That's...
The city?
I'm gonna say us.
Or the city community?
So, that's basically our planning staff.
Okay.
But more importantly, for accessory dwelling units, it's really our building inspectors.
Okay.
That's a big part of our community development office, and that's one of the things that I really appreciate about the changes that we made last year. I think it gave us an opportunity to place more emphasis on simply making sure that different living arrangements are safe. So, we really tried to create a sense of confidence for property owners in the community that if they wanted to get things legal and safe, you know, they could approach us and we could have those dialogues about how to make that happen. But really, that's, that's the approval that, that the community development office would, would be granting. We, of course, check some of the fundamentals, lot size and those types of things to make sure that properties qualify, but then it's really a matter of building inspections and just trying to make sure that the fundamentals from a life safety perspective are in place.
The other thing I like in this, the requirement is that the owner has to reside on the property with a few minor exceptions, like, you know, a sabbatical or three years or less of activities such as job reassignments or service or whatever, and so I think that's reassuring that the owner's going to be living on the property with these people, so.
Yeah, and by definition, that's a fundamental. I appreciate you pointing that out. One of the things that makes me feel comfortable with recommending that you expand the opportunities that people have to create these is just that, the idea that there is a owner present. I think that does a number of different things, maybe most importantly, things have a tendency to be more self-policing with a higher level of care when you're not dealing with an absentee landlord and maybe some other arrangements that don't afford that same level of supervision day in and day out. So, that's a really, really big deal, and that's a key distinguishment between the arrangement that we're talking about now and maybe just allowing for duplexes or just simply two dwellings on, on a property, you know, without some of the provisions that we have here.
Any other questions?
Yes. Dave, can you speak to, I know we're trying to strike a balance, we've been working on this for years, but people hear this today and they can't just go construct. There's a lot of trepidation between, you know, people pulling permits, say, I had a neighbor friend a couple of weeks ago say, "I don't want to pull a permit for my shed." But, it's a free permit, right? The only reason we do that is to help with the oversight. Don't build your shed too close and have to move it from the property line. Can you talk about the permitting process with this and some of the things that we've tried to work through, because we don't want people not to apply.
So, this is commercial time for me. I appreciate the chance to do that, and for us, it's really about not causing heartache. We don't like going to somebody after, for example, they've, they've built a fence, you know, or you can tell it's brand-new, you know, wood, maybe hasn't been stained yet. It's where we have to tell them that, you know, they've got to maybe pull out the first 25 feet of it or something like that, because it was built in such a way that doesn't meet the city's requirements. It gets worse when we get word that somebody's finished a basement and it hasn't been inspected at all. And we have inspectors that try to figure out if that's been constructed in such a way that, again, just the fundamentals from a safety perspective have been met, and obviously once you get drywall up and you can't see electrical things and plumbing and that type of a thing, the remedies become, you know, just more costly and more difficult, and those are conversations that we hate to have. You know, accessory buildings like sheds, it's the same thing. So, that's why, and we've appreciated over the years, the council's willingness to work with us to try to remove the barriers that we think we can remove, that maybe the disincentives to having somebody apply for certain permits, so we don't charge for fence permits. We just want to talk to some... We just want to talk to somebody to make sure that when they build a fence, they put it up so that it's not a problem. That's it. We don't require people to pay for base, I'm sorry, building permits to finish their basements. Same logic, right? And like you mentioned, for sheds of a certain size, no fee for the permit. We much prefer to spend our time working with people beforehand so that they can get it built the right way than have to go back and try to fix things down the road. So I hope that answers your question, but we.
Yeah, I prepped you for that reason.
Thank you.
It's a platform that we need to make sure that people understand that that the city's not a barrier. They want to be a help in these situations to make sure we get the right final product.
Yeah, that's really good. My son, who's a builder in another city, had a friend that wanted to finish his basement here in Spanish Fork and he said, "Yeah, I want to make sure I do it right. So what's the process of getting a permit? How much is it?" And I said, "Well, just for you today, we've got a special." You know, so just go online and it won't cost you a dime. And they were very appreciative of that. So that's another thing that's neat about what we do here in Spanish Fork. So, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number 08-20, amending Title 15, Chapter 4, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is that how you started that out?
That's, boy, you got it right.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, second by Councilman Scopes. This also is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Thank you. Enterprise fund transfer to other funds for FY 2021.
Today I have a couple of public hearings to talk about. The first one is, deals with a new law that was passed in 2017. When the city transfers money from our enterprise funds to other funds, we are required to do certain noticing and information about that transfer. And so today, last week we talked, or last meeting, two weeks ago, we talked about fiscal budget 21 and in that budget, there is a transfer from our utility or our enterprise funds to the general fund and today, we have a special public hearing just to discuss those transfers and what disclosures. This is what, basically what the law requires us to do. It defines what information I need to disclose to the public and where it needs to be disclosed at and how the public hearing is to be conducted and what things were discussed in this public hearing. So the, there was a letter, a notice that was sent to all utility customers telling them about this meeting tonight, about this public hearing and also giving them the details as far as how much money was be transferred from each fund and to which fund it was going to be transferred to. So basically, in this discussion, I'm following the outline as far as what the state law says I need to discuss. There are two parts of a transfer or two types of transfers that can come out of an enterprise fund. I'm gonna label them, number ones and number twos. The first one are called indirect services, which is overhead and related operational type expenses that can be charged out to those enterprise funds for services done. And the other one is more of a gift type transfer, which is, it's not going to be repaid back and it can't be justified based on services rendered. So it's just, it's a gift or a dividend that's given to them. And as the information about the transfer on a gift or dividend, it needs to know the amount and the percentage of how it relates to the expenses of that fund. So here's a copy of the letter that was sent to every utility customer. It details out the requirements that we needed to give as far as the dollar amount and what percent of the expenditures in that fund. There's also a transfer from the electric department to the debt service fund for them to cover the debt service for the public safety building. Okay, this is zoomed in a little bit more so you can see the different funds that we're talking about. There are water, sewer, electric, storm drain, streets and storm, garbage and broadband services. Again, these are the types of information I needed to talk about. Number one, this one is the indirect services. This is charging services that are provided by the general fund out to those enterprise funds for them to pay a portion share of covering the cost of those general fund services departments. Examples of those are general government, administration, legal, information services, planning, engineering and buildings and grounds. Those are ones that they share a cost of their budgets to those enterprise funds. This is the required information as far as a proportional share of tells you what percent and what dollars for each one of these departments they're being assessed. A portion of it, the dividend rate that was calculated this year was 4% of the earnings of the gross revenues of each one of those utility funds. This is a slide that shows the mapping of all transfers. You can see that part of it is up here, this is the enterprise funds and the part that this hearing is are the green section here as far as the transfers out and this is the transfers into the general fund. There are other transfers that go on that the city uses to function its business, but those aren't required for public hearings, just the enterprise ones. And that covers my portion for that public hearing and now you can enter in that public hearing and see if there's any comment.
Thank you for letting me do that. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Still moved?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone that'd like to come and address from the public this issue? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public.
No? Okay. He moved his left hand.
I looked right at him.
You didn't.
I did.
Okay. I make a motion to go out of public hearing. Just wanted to make sure we were good.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments?
Will the airport have an enterprise fund next year?
Yes. It's. It is in there, but it's not for, we didn't advertise them as giving any of their utility fees because it's not a utility fee. And same with Gun Club. There are another enterprise fund that isn't that way.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve enterprise fund transfer to other funds for FY 2021.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. FY 2020, Spanish Fork City Budget Revision Number Four.
Number four. So FY 2020 is, our fiscal year ends the end of June, so we've got two weeks left in our fiscal year. We had a revision the first part of April with COVID and the rest of construction and cell stacks and we were hanging on as long as we could to get our final revision in. So this is the final revision for the current year that we're in right now. I'm gonna give you a 10,000-foot view of this and quick.
I hope you don't get seasick.
So the current budget, you see that it's 117 million and still 117 million, but it did change about 500,000. We increased it to make sure that we have enough budgeted funds for some of the construction projects that are going on, the sales tax that we're capturing, making sure that we have enough budgeted funds budgeted, so. So this revision is an increase of half a million dollars to get 17 million, 117 million, 600,000 dollars. So I'm gonna walk you through some of those changes. This is each of our types of funds. We have the general fund and then we talk about our enterprise funds, so 67 million in enterprise funds and then we have some miscellaneous funds that are capital project funds, RDA funds, stuff like that. Here's the picture of the pie of those three funds and you see that enterprise funds are the large proportion of our budget. These are the changes in each one of those funds depicted in the graphic, but this is the numbers that shows how it compares in each of those categories and how they change. You can see that the miscellaneous funds, some of those capital project funds decreased by a million, but the enterprise funds increased by a million. And what that was is we have moved some of the capital project funds into enterprise funds. For example, some of our capital projects were roads and those roads really should be accounted for in the enterprise funds of storm drain and roads and streets. So we've moved those in there and this is accounting for that move. These are the enterprise funds itemized out. You can see electric went down, why a storm drain went up and that's the movement of those funds. This is a summary of the general fund of which departments in this revision. So everybody had a little bit of changes as they trued up their personnel, as they trued up some of their operational types expenditures. For a total it increased to 365 million dollars. Thousand dollars, that's right. I said that and I thought that didn't sound right. This is the general fund. I zoomed in on a couple of these just to show you that sales tax, we were kind of anticipating what might happen with sales tax as we ended this year and right now, we're anticipating that we anticipated it was gonna be really bad and it's not really bad, it's just not really good, but we're anticipating it's not gonna be as bad as we thought it was gonna be so far. Again, this is the revision of the final for the whole year for FY 20, revision number four and the total budget is that 117 million.
I'd entertain a motion to go in public hearing.
Still moved?
A motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any one that'd like to come talk about the budget from the public?
I do have one thing that I remembered that I was gonna add. I want to make sure the public has an opportunity to talk on this.
Did you state your name?
I'm a resident on the west side of town. Can you put that other picture up that I sent to you? Chris wanted me to cover this and I got down here and remembered I'd left a piece of paper on my desk, so. I had a picture of it, so I sent him a picture and we're gonna talk about this for just a second. However big that can get, that would be great. Perfect. What this discussion is about is about the sewer. Last, we've had a couple of council meetings about the sewer plant, the proposed new sewer plant. We've adopted a parameters resolution that says that the city is planning to issue bonds to build a new sewer plant. That is a big investment for our city. The parameters resolution was 90 million dollars. In order to make a debt payment service payment on that 90 million or, which we're anticipating, anticipating it might be 70, 80 million, we're not quite sure exactly where that's at, but we put the parameters as saying we're not to exceed. The city's gonna have to raise their sewer rates over the next couple of years in order anticipating at the point that we're gonna be bonding and making a bond payment that we have enough revenue stream in our billing capacity that we can make that bond payment. And so Chris has proposed a five-year rate increase over the next five years, small amounts over the next five years in order to get us to the point of when that sewer billing or sewer bond, the payments were gonna be, need to be made. And so I want to kind of talk a little bit about those and put it into this public hearing as far as for the, as this year ends, knowing that the rates, the rates have already been discussed for next year's budget, but we didn't ever really talk about the five-year plan or the program that we're heading into for the next five years. And so Chris wanted me to have that discussion now in this public hearing so that we can have established that plan in a public meeting. So what this, our current rates are listed here on the top and they're different size meters, which are, the size meters are here, but the average home usually is about a one-inch meter. And so the base rate is 1695 with the rate per thousand gallons is $1.66. And so as far as calculating your utility rate for your sewer bill, you'd have a base rate of 1695 plus whatever you're used in winter or your in-house water consumption is 1,000 gallons, but every, for every 1,000 gallons, it's $1.66. So if an average is about 6,000 gallons per month inside use, you'd take six times $1.66 for your usage rate. You add those two numbers together, the 1695 and that usage rate, that's your sewer bill. And so as we look forward to the next five years, this is the one-inch plan to increase that base rate. Last, okay. The year we're in right now, sorry, is 1839. This is 2018's year. This is the current year we're just in right now. This is the rate for 2021 and then it goes forward to 2025. So that's the base rate incrementing over time and then that unit rate is $1.66. Right now it's 201 and then it's gonna gradually increase over that same amount of time. So not only is the base rate gonna increase a little bit, but also the usage rate is also gonna increase. Now, the average increase of each year on these is $1.75. So, you know, to do the math too much, so each year, the base is gonna go up $1.75 per month and the units over here on the rates is gonna be around 30 cents per thousand gallons. So we wanted to have that discussion as far as for the sewer. These were presented as new rates right here, so these were already in the budget that we've already presented and the council's deciding for 2021 and that budget starts July 1st. But with that mayor, that's the part I was gonna add to that so the public has an opportunity to talk about.
Which section do most people fall under? Up there?
The one-inch.
One-inch, right.
One-inch.
And then an example of 1.5 or two or?
It could be a bigger house or a commercial. If you go this direction, this would be commercial, schools, church.
Three inches is the biggest we have.
Biggest they have. And so the, your rate is dependent upon the size of your meter that goes into your house. That's what that's on.
Great. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Got a motion by Councilmember Beck and a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Kit, what's the bottom line? We've not seen these numbers, so. At the end of five years, what's the bottom line?
Right there. That's the bottom line. That's where we're going to here.
Plus your usage.
Plus the usage rate.
Okay, well, how much? I can't see it even with my glasses.
Oh, 26, 2680.
Oh, sorry. 2680 is the.
Fiscal year 25.
Base.
Okay.
And then $3.44 per thousand gallons there.
So almost a $10 increase over five years? For the base rate, 16 to 26.
Right, so it's 18 right now.
Oh, 18.
And it's gonna go to 26. So it's $1.75 per year for five years.
This is the sewer rate that we've been talking about for the past couple of years where we've talked about being you know, $2.50 or $3, some kind of incremental change over the next, well, for the past handful of years and for the next handful of years as we move toward that new sewer treatment plant. What we've asked Chris to do, in some of his calculations, he's had a number that actually doesn't amount to, doesn't translate rather, to a dollar amount. doesn't amount to, doesn't translate, rather, to a dollar amount in the budget because of the way they calculate things, and so we asked him to come up, to put it in terms that actually will mean something, and we can kind of benchmark how, how we're doing with our estimates versus actuals. I expect that these rates will change in the next couple of years as we get closer to the actual year, but this does give us a sense of where that base rate will go. The target still, and is Jared, I don't know if, oh, there you are. The target still is that we hit a dollar amount, an average monthly amount of...
It's about forty...
Forty-five.
Yeah, forty-five-ish.
Is that still the case?
Yeah, that's, that's still the target. And, but now, like I said, when he says about forty-five dollars a month in the presentation that he gives you, that doesn't actually translate to a base rate and a usage rate, and so we're trying to get it, so we're always speaking the same language, so there isn't some confusion for you as the council and the public as we talk about this going forward.
Okay. All right. I would like to turn a little time over to Seth.
Well, now we're into new business, so...
We're in new business now.
Did you already vote?
No, we did not. That's in, that's A of new business.
Yeah.
We closed.
So we closed public hearing, we had a vote, and then you stood up again. That's why I asked you about your name.
Oh, I thought we were still here.
Well, Kit, stay with me. With me or without me?
I knew that was coming. Mayor, just maybe a brief reprieve from the public hearing business and the new business. Take a few moments, and frankly, I may get in a little bit of trouble for doing what I'm going to do to one of my good friends and colleagues, but today is the last council meeting where John Bocutt will be part of our staff, and I can't see behind me. I worry about the eyes that he's making. But I think we definitely need to take a moment and celebrate a little bit of what John has accomplished here in Spanish Fork City during his fantastic career. John has been with us for many years, at least twenty, but even before twenty-one years, John was with us in contract ways, right, John? When did you actually start interacting with Spanish Fork City employees?
Nineteen eighty-six.
He was still in high school then. He graduated in nineteen ninety-seven, so he's just one of those techie guys. Anyway, John, John Bocutt runs our information systems. What most of our residents would know, the Spanish Fork Community Network, that's the most prominent community part of our information systems. Internally, he runs, of course, all of our computers and the information systems that we have in the city, the networks. He started here doing computers, and he built our own internal city network, but he quickly became an integral part of really everything that we do technologically speaking. And near the end of the nineteen, nineteen hundreds, nineteen, yeah, near the end of the nineteen hundreds, that sounds so old, John, but coming close to Y2K, John and Dave, Dave Euler, Kent Clark, and many others, and then the mayor and council at that time began working on what we now call the Spanish Fork Community Network. And John helped to spearhead and design that network with the help of many, many people. But John has really helped to grow the community network that we have from nothing, as it was in the late nineteen nineties to early two thousands, to what it is today, a shining star in the entire state of Utah. And there are so many people that have been involved in the successes of SFCN and in the successes of our information systems. Many of you, right, elected officials having the courage to do some of these things that are unique in the landscape of Utah, previous mayors and council members as well. But in order to pull off the greatness that we have, we really have needed people like John to do that work, to dream the ideas, to then create a path that those ideas can come to fruition, and then to carry it out. John has put together an amazing staff. He's worked with so many people in the public, again, in the late nineties, early two thousands, there was a community group that was put together for the creation of SFCN and to bounce ideas off, and a lot of great minds, tech minds were involved in this, and from that group, over the years, we have harvested great resources, and one of them is the invention of smart parks, so there's Wi-Fi in all of our parks. We were able to grab employees, and Brian Perry, who will replace John Bocutt, actually was a part of that group that they put together at the beginning of all of this. But just wanted to take this moment and say thank you to John. He's a great man, a great friend, a great colleague, and has done so much. Our community is a better place for the work that John has done, and I, he asked to not have any recognition, and I just couldn't honor it. There have been many things that John's asked that I've honored, but I just couldn't honor this one, and I hope he'll forgive me for taking this moment to shine the spotlight on him, someone who is typically behind the spotlight shining it, right? But just to say thank you, and we'll miss him. We hope that we have many interactions with him in the future in different endeavors, but there, he's always welcome, and he already knows that. But just a great individual, and I think it would be awesome if he wanted to say some nice things only.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah. You'd still do work for all of these guys for another fifteen days or so. No, but I, if you wanted to say anything as well, but John Bocutt, and then when we're done with John, maybe I'll come back and say one more thing. Thanks, John.
Thank you so much. It actually has been an amazing project and an amazing twenty-one years. I wasn't hired to do the SFCN project, but I got to work with an incredible man whose name hasn't been said, and it needs to be said, because in my opinion, he is the father of municipal broadband systems in Utah, and his name is Dave Euler. He is a, did you say Dave? Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry. But he is, he is an amazing man, and he stopped at my office yesterday, and I told him he was the father, and I called him dad, and he, he didn't like that very much, but I did it anyways. But yeah, he's, he's been amazing, and the people I've worked with here, I cannot say enough about what a well-run city and what a great, what great people I work with, both the, all the councils that I've worked with have all been wonderful. Seth Perrins has just been amazing, and all the support that we've had at SFCN, all the other, the other department heads, we all worked so well together, and I don't know if you appreciate that as much as I do, because I've worked with a lot of different cities, and all the department heads work, work great together, not just the Class of Seventy-Nine, but all of us work, work well together. And I'm not going to do the Asha Baba. It's just not going to happen. Not going to happen. But, and then also, I would like to thank the employees, and this is where I'll get emotional, my employees who have just been incredible to work with, and they make me look good every day, and I do appreciate that from, and I can't start saying their names because I'll leave some of them off, but, but certainly Brian Perry and Brady Taylor, they have just, just done a tremendous job for you and for the residents of Spanish Fork, and I, I thank you for the opportunities that I've had. It's, it's just been a tremendous career. Thank you.
Every week at council meeting, his department actually has represented the most in our council meetings, when we've got a handful of their staff here in the room with us, behind the cameras, Pete and, let's see, Travis are in the other room, or other rooms, making sure that this broadcast happens, and it's a fantastic network. I mean, where in Utah, or maybe even in the nation, can you watch football in the high school football stadium on a Friday night? Where in the world can you go watch your high school football team play in a tournament down in St. George, right? I mean, just some of the neat things we've done, and just some great people involved in that. So John, we're going to miss you and wish you well, wish you success in, in what you have planned, and what you don't have planned yet, because you don't know everything you're going to do, because he's going to retire, and you've got a lot of freedom there, right? And then maybe just for a moment, highlight also Pam Jackson, our library director. This is also actually Pam's last council meeting, where she will be an employee as well. Pam Jackson has also announced her retirement here before our next council meeting, and she's not here tonight, so I can't call her up. She's watching at home. She's also, like maybe John did for a moment, cussing my name a little bit, and hopefully she'll forgive me for taking a moment and celebrating the successes that she has had. She came on full-time with the city just about the same time as John, actually. She's got about twenty years with us full-time, and she spent a handful of years part-time before that, and has been the library director since, I think, two thousand and five. And just shortly after I got here, maybe within six or eight months of me getting here, she became the library director, and has just improved, built on and improved everything about the library, which is the mark you want to leave, right? When you go, when you go someplace, you hope to leave it at least as good as you found it, maybe hopefully better than you found it, and Pam has certainly done that in the library in so many ways, and has continued with great staff and has added more great staff to the library. And many people don't know this, actually, most people do, but they may not know that they know it. The library is one of the most heavily-used amenities that we have, but people just go and they use the library and they go home, and those residents that don't go to the library think nobody goes to the library, but they're just wrong, flat-out wrong. The numbers of people that have active library accounts is astonishing. It's, it's well above seventy percent, and that means that seventy percent of our households in Spanish Fork go to the library on some kind of regular basis, and that's just phenomenal. And of course, we've been talking about the new library, and we'll talk about building a new library here shortly in the agenda, but a lot of the use and the happiness, the joy that our residents experience at the library comes from the work and the direction that Pam has put forward. And again, just want to take a moment and thank her for her service, and we'll certainly miss her there, and many of the library patrons who have grown to enjoy interacting with her and seeing her there will miss her, and, and we wish her Godspeed as well with, with the great plans that she and her husband have as they, as they move on to this next chapter of their life. And so I wanted to also take that moment and, and share with you Pam's name and her successes, and wish her well in this forum. Mayor, thank you for that.
Yeah, and I think we ought to give Pam a standing ovation. Thank you, and yes, it has been a great ride. Mayor, I can just talk on behalf of the council myself. John, we really appreciate you and all you've done. It was really interesting, right after I became the mayor, first time, I had about four mayors come to my office and say, how do we get your system in our city, you know? And I said, well, it all starts with John Bocutt, but then go talk to your legislators, because that's the problem. So they recognized what we had here, and it was phenomenal. And so from all of us, thank you for all you've done, and enjoy what you're going to do, and don't be a stranger, you know, we'll let you come back, hang around. All right. All right, let's move on to new business. Adoption of FY twenty twenty, Spanish Fork City Budget Revision Number Four.
New discussion? We've done that, so...
We've done that.
I'll make a motion, we approve fiscal year twenty twenty, City Budget Revision Number Four.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Legacy Estates Preliminary Plot Plan Approval Request.
Good, Mayor, thank you. This property is kind of a unique place on the southeast, sorry, southwest corner of Legacy Farms. There's a park. It's planned, hasn't been built yet. This property is just west of that, so snuggled up next to the railroad tracks there. In fact, maybe the best way to describe exactly where this is, if you're familiar with Expressway Lane, so picture going by McDonald's and Wendy's and so forth, heading east, coming to State Road Fifty-One, that T-intersection there, if you were able to just continue to go straight there, I guess you can, you can go through that residential neighborhood. If you followed that road to where it dead-ends, this property is just on the other side of the railroad tracks there, on the east side of the tracks. It's not a really big parcel, big enough to accommodate, I think it's eighteen lots, it might be a little bit off there. As proposed, the project is a master plan development, not necessarily because of the lot size being small, it's more a factor of some of the lots being a little bit narrow, the configuration of the property is a little bit unique, you know, where you kind of get that trapezoidal shape. It's a little bit tricky to design a project there in an efficient way, but the property was zoned, R1-9, when it was annexed, so there's no zone change involved, just a relatively straightforward proposal to have a preliminary plat approved. I'll just mention a couple of other things about the streets, the cul-de-sac there, you can see there's something kind of funny at the end of it, and that, I think, probably will change just a little bit in terms of exactly how it's configured, but that indeed is the city park, again, not constructed, just there to the east.
Right there.
That's it, yeah, thank you. And we think that it's going to be appreciated to have some kind of connection there with that park space, so having some parking spaces and just a way for residents of this neighborhood, and maybe neighborhoods to the south, to be able to get over to that park conveniently. We think that's a good idea. The applicant, it's been great to work with relative to how that's designed and so forth, so there's that. I'll also mention that we did receive a call, somebody on staff last week, about access to this property, and I've talked that through with this applicant, the developer. We do have a requirement in Spanish Fork that when developers develop property, they take utilities and roads to and then through a property. One of the phases in Legacy Farms to the north, I think it may be a matter of perspective, but some might argue that it actually stops just a little bit short of the boundary of this property to the north, and it's been indicated that the developer there, that project, might not necessarily want to connect that street to this property. Certainly without that connection, this property couldn't be developed, and we've, we've let the developer here, like I said, know that that's an issue that they have to get worked out. Frankly, I think there might also be a role for the city to play in helping to make sure that this property has the access that has been intended for quite some time now, but I think that's a separate issue. Like I said, relatively straightforward proposal just to approve a subdivision in the R1-9 zone.
Can you?
Does this hit to your hook over to your neighborhood?
Yeah, would you mind going down to slide three? So if you go down, so you look at this, one more, I'm sorry. This future road, you connect that, I just have a concern about if you, if, well, maybe talk to us about that future road, or what your understanding is that would trigger that.
When would that road be built?
Yeah.
Not until this property develops.
In, okay, when it, when it develops, and I would prefer that that develop after it's connected to Spanish Fork Parkway and able to exit, because if this property's only way out is back through the Reese subdivision via this new road, it makes fourth north even just that much more, right, unbearable.
I'd have to say that you're right, that if this connection happened, and I think you're right, before the Spanish Fork Parkway connection over the railroad tracks is made, that this does become probably a more attractive route than going north.
And it still may. Well, you know, will these children attend Reese Elementary School?
That I don't know.
I don't know that either.
You might.
But...
I'm not sure about the boundaries there.
Okay.
So I've got to speculate a little bit to try to answer that. We're working, maybe to put Mr. Johnson on the spot here, as I understand it, we're working to have that connection made sometime next year.
Spanish Fork Parkway?
Spanish Fork Parkway won't happen next year. They'll have to replace it with two.
Okay. So, two years from now, we haven't had any conversations with anybody about developing this property here.
A year ago, we said two years.
Well, and obviously, I was thinking that we were...
Well, and obviously I was thinking that we were on track to be next year, so.
It's, it's the railroad. We are still working out the agreement.
What we're saying maybe for the microphone is that we're.
We have to get approval for a crossing over that railroad and we're frankly held hostage by the railroad. We are prepared to and capable, I think, of building it, probably not this year at this point, if we were to get that permission, but we, we have to have a railroad tracks crossing permission.
So currently, Spanish Fork Parkway is under construction to the railroad. We're excavating all the fillouts, the houses can be built. We have another meeting with the railroad on Friday. It's a virtual meeting to discuss the letter that UDOT is, is sending to the railroad to require the access be granted. So it's under UDOT's control now. The railroad's denied it twice. One's an official denial. We met about two weeks ago with the letter that we'd sent from UDOT and they again denied it. So Jim Golden with UDOT is going to make it official and this process is going to take longer and so we won't have the permit until about this time next year. So we can start construction in the fall of '21, but we won't be paving until 2022. So that's the timeline.
What if they keep denying it? Or are we just confident they'll cave?
As I can.
The UDOT steps.
Yeah, the UDOT, our master plan, and we've taken the steps necessary.
It was once approved and we have a diagnostic on it. The railroad's requirements have changed. They require that we close three accesses instead of two. We don't have another access that we can close. We are closing the two. It does meet our master plan. We spent the millions of dollars to build the roads to this. So UDOT is in control of that and will basically permit the, the crossing, so.
So Dave, question. There's currently a development north of this, it's just not showing on this picture?
Yeah, that's Legacy Farms, right up here.
That's the cross, then.
This is.
That is the crossing, one of the crossings we're proposing to close. So originally, our master plan had Expressway Lane as the major road, working through MAG and UDOT. We moved the road to the north to create the Spanish Fork Parkway to tie into Canyon Parkway at the IHA Hospital. So this does meet UDOT and MAG's requirements. Originally, we have this crossing here, so it's, it's just a matter of time. The railroad can't deny it, they just have denied it. I don't, that makes sense, but.
Changed leadership there, so he's flexing his muscle.
So to Councilman Gordon's question, just about the timing, I'm just kind of running through some things in my head. The development of this property could happen in this calendar year. It, it could start probably at this point. They could not start building homes here until next spring though, given that it's June. We haven't had any conversations with anybody about developing this. Again, I'm speculating, but if things were to happen as fast as they possibly could, somebody might be building some homes here towards the end of 2021, but largely there would not be much, you know, new home construction here. Depending on how somebody phases it, I doubt even necessarily that the connection would be made down to the Reese neighborhood until what Jared described were to happen. So I mean, you know, lots of variables there and that type of a thing. This is something that we asked the developers engineer to prepare, largely just so that we could make sure, and it's pretty straightforward, right? Just a couple of curves, but we were a little bit sensitive to the idea that connectivity is so limited in this part of the community. And the Reese neighborhood, you know, it's, it's a big cul-de-sac, so making sure that we had some ability to connect that to something else. Again, it's, it's obviously some pretty simple line work, but that's the main thing that we were working to accomplish with this.
That subdivision is right there.
Which will be developed.
I don't want to say it, but yeah.
There's still a pretty good.
The owner of the property won't be.
A ground there, Dave, that's not developed. It wasn't worth it.
There's still a pretty good piece of ground that's not developed.
It is platted though.
It is platted, okay.
Is Reese school batteries?
Those children will attend Reese.
And so assuming that happens, then those parents are going to shuttle all the way around until that road is built.
Are you going to assist the nice bike paths?
Possibly.
What's the forest, what do you call it, granite?
The haunted forest?
Okay.
Whatever you want, I don't know. It's been a while since I've been known.
Good. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Legacy Estates Preliminary Plat.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Resolution 2018, emitting Water to be Transferred to the City Upon Development.
Mayor and Council, I'll try my best to present this. This, this resolution is basically the corollary of the amendment that we did in Title 15. One of those amendments was that we acquired cash in lieu as an option in, in addition to the water dedication. This resolution sets the quantity of the dedication that's required and the quality of the water. So we specify what type of water and then also the amount of the cash in lieu that the city would accept if, in lieu of the water itself. Any questions? Thanks.
All right, I'd entertain a motion on this resolution.
Motion to approve Resolution 2018, Amending Water to be Transferred to the City Upon Development.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Say it.
Seconded by Councilman Scobes. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
All right. Resolution 2019, Approving an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Between Utah County and Local Entities, Spanish Fork Distribution for the COVID Relief Fund.
So Mayor and Council, you have in your agenda material is a contract that has been given, drafted and given to each city in Utah County by Utah County. The purposes of this agreement is to give access to each city based on a formula mostly defined by population. Utah County as a, as a government entity with a population of more than $500,000 was given.
Five thousand people.
Did I, what number did I say?
You said dollars.
$500,000. With a population greater than 500,000 people, was given money through the CARES Act, the COVID, Federal COVID Relief Act. They were given about $111 million and they have the ability to use that money however they want. Salt Lake County was also granted funds from the CARES Act and Utah, the state of Utah. No other government entities in this, this state were granted funds, local governments like, like the state or counties or cities. The state of Utah, in conjunction and working with the cities and counties of this state, have identified a formula whereby each city can have access to COVID relief funds. These funds have all of the strings associated, all the requirements that are associated with the CARES Act. Specifically, these funds are not to be used for revenue loss replacement. So in our budget that we just approved, Dale reduced revenue for recreation programs because we weren't able to have spring soccer and other spring programs. That revenue is, is lost and you can't use this to replace it. It is most specifically to use for COVID, direct COVID expenses such as masks that we have bought or more hand sanitizer or for time spent working on COVID related items. And the money can be used also to supplement or maybe to use a word we believe to replace the federal programs that have happened. So many of our local businesses have had access to federal programs, but when they got their application in, all the money was gone. And so we now have access to, I believe our amount is $2.95 million for just inside the Spanish Fork boundary. That's the money that we have access to for COVID relief. And so we can, with this money, start to, to make program and funds available to our businesses and to our residents in ways that is in line with the federal guidelines. We do not yet fully understand all of those federal guidelines. We're working on that. A handful of different people in different cities are all coordinating, trying to get an understanding of these federal guidelines. But the issue before you today is with this agreement the county has sent, initially the county's position was they were going to administer all $111 million. And as cities, we potentially would have access to zero dollars and maybe no say in how that happens. So would the Spanish Fork residents get access to it or not? And Mayor Laufson, along with groups of other mayors here in Utah County, spent a lot of time, a lot of effort and a lot of energy to, to change the position of Utah County and align it more with the state and Salt Lake County and how they're operating. So this agreement is what Utah County drafted to give them comfort that they can turn over to Spanish Fork or to Orem or all the other cities, whatever the formula says, the amount that we're, we are entitled to. There are some concerns about the contract that is before you and, and have you met yet at all with the attorneys?
They had a Zoom meeting today.
Okay.
But I was having other appointments, not going to make it, but they're concerned about the indemnification agreements or provisions and the termination.
I'll restate it for them.
Sorry. So those are kind of the main two things, termination and the indemnification.
So there are some concerns by some of the Utah County cities that the language in the contract is, it goes maybe too far. And they want to make sure and review all of those in, in maybe a collective manner because rather than some cities do it one way and some cities do it another, and then the county has to administer two different sets of contracts or whatever. They've, they've, they've asked that we, we have some discussions and try to amend and adjust that contract. We'd like to be able to use these funds sooner than later. We have some expenditures that we'd like to be able to reimburse ourselves for in this fiscal year, maybe about $100,000, well, at this point, maybe $150,000 in this fiscal year of direct COVID related expenditures. And then we foresee some that are coming in 20, in, well, from July until December, direct COVID expenditures. But then maybe most importantly, we want to put, we want to get our two, slightly more than two, two and a half million dollars left. We want to get that into the hands of the business community. Let's get that money circulating within our community. So we don't want to delay a whole lot, but we, but if there are real concerns that we need to be focused on as other cities are catching, what, what we would suggest as you consider this tonight is to approve it subject to the mayor and the city attorney's final review and any changes that may come through the discussions that Vaughn is engaged in at this moment with the different cities as well as Utah County. Again, our hope is to have access to this, these funds before the end of the fiscal year, which is in the next three weeks. We won't meet again until July 7. If for some reason we can't get it to that mark before the July 7 meeting, we can just have it on that agenda and, and bring it back for, for full approval. But Vaughn, as Vaughn is starting these conversations with the attorneys and, and working in conjunction with the mayor and all the mayors and county commissioners, that would be our, our suggestion that you consider approving it subject to the final approval and review of, of the mayor and the city attorney.
You mentioned it, but I think it can't, it should be said again, that Mayor Laufson was very, very loud about this money not getting to the end of the row. And it's probably the reason he was nominated by the other mayors to be on the Economic Recovery Committee. Is that accurate, Mayor?
I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of many loud voices. And, you know, we spent a lot of time on this and it finally changed the, the opinion of the county commissioners.
Yeah, there's been a lot of coverage. There's been a lot of coverage even in the news about some of the backs in force that have happened and some of the challenges and, and, you know, certainly been a healthy discussion process. We would have loved to see, you know, we'd, we'd have loved maybe to be talking about this about a month ago because we've, in, in the wrangling that has occurred, we've, we've lost about a month.
Exactly.
Maybe a little bit more. And that's just simply time that the money isn't in the hands of some of the businesses that really need it.
People don't recognize that we're the fourth largest city in Utah County.
Yeah.
It doesn't feel like that to a lot of us, but, but it really, anyway. Mayor, that was me, that was me saying thank you, Mayor, for your efforts.
Well, there's been a lot of meetings. I've spent a lot of meetings in person, on phone and a lot of separate conversations with each one of the county commissioners and, and as like other mayors did. And I think they finally realized, you know, we're big boys, you know, we know how to handle our own funds and we deal with millions of dollars. As you see, our budget was 117 million. We're talking about less than $3 million. And so our response back to them is, hey, we know how to handle money and we can follow the rules. We do it every day. So finally, they, they have and so they sent this agreement to us. Once we sign this agreement, they will send, cut us a check. So if, once we get this agreement signed and where all of us are comfortable with, we can expect that money here soon, so.
Where's the other 65 million going?
What happened is they took the 111 million, they took $20 million out, set aside for businesses in Utah County.
That they'll administer that 20 million, right?
That's the committee.
Yeah, that, thank you.
The 20 million will be distributed by seven member panel, which is made up of six mayors and one county commissioner. And so then we divided it in half, the county took half, the, all the rest of the cities took the other half and it's all based on population, what your share is, what you'll get. And so our share was just south of $3 million, and so.
So there possibly could be not only the money for us, but then also some of that 20 million if used within the county.
Right. And what, what we're looking at is if we don't spend all our money, that all goes back into that 20 million pot where we can distribute it to other businesses throughout the county.
Good.
So, yeah, it's, it's worked out pretty good, finally.
We may get some of those questions coming up, but we have any idea how that monies will be distributed for our businesses?
Uh, no.
Or has that got, not got that?
Him got that, but we're having our first meeting either Friday or Monday.
Yeah. And a safe, a safe understanding, a safe assumption is that it will follow the, the similar guidelines for the PPP, the Payment Protection Program and some of the other federal stimulus related, stimulus programs that are out there. Just, we can now direct our money, they can then direct the countywide money just focused right here.
Yeah.
Get it into their hands.
Yeah, once we get that money, then we can decide how we can distribute that and get that to our people.
Yeah. Dave, you've done, or Dave, Dave's been in a handful of meetings, community development wise. We've done some survey work with the Chamber of Commerce, just connecting with the businesses, trying to get a couple of pieces in place. We're not quite ready to pull any triggers, but we'll hopefully be as fast if, you know, one of the faster cities to be able to do that with, with some of the things we've.
Right.
Set up while we're waiting.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 20-19, Approving an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Between Utah County and Local Entities, Spanish Fork, for Distribution from the Coronavirus Relief Fund.
Then add.
Subject to pending.
The review.
Review.
Of the mayor and.
Of the mayor.
And Vaughn.
Great.
And legal, how's that?
Perfect.
And Vaughn.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Okay. FY 2021, Spanish Fork City Budget Adoption Set, TNT hearing for August.
TNT stands for Truth in Taxation. Apologize, that abbreviation made it on the agenda. I was reading that, like, oh, totally didn't, that didn't need to be abbreviated, that's so federal government like. So the purpose of, of this item on the agenda is typically today, as we get to the, the end of the 2021 budget creation cycle, today would be the, the night, tonight would be the night we would approve the FY 21 budget. Because of the, there's a provision in the 21 budget where we have considered raising property taxes for two purposes. One, the construction of and the operation of our second station 61. One, the construction of and the operation of our second Station 62 that is under construction and will be completed end of July, 1st of August. And then the second element of a property tax increase would be to construct a new library. With that property tax increase element, we have opted to, in years past, not actually approve the budget, but to defer the approval to a time in August where we have to have, if we're going to raise property taxes, a Truth in Taxation Hearing. That is a term in state law where we are required to hold a public hearing in typically our first council meeting in August, where we discuss what that rate could be and the public is given the opportunity to weigh in. Notices are sent to the public from Utah County, who is the property tax collection agency. And so tonight, what I'd like to get from you is at least have some discussion about what should that look like? If we don't want to raise any of the property taxes, we need to change those numbers in the budget and you can approve that budget tonight. If you, if we do want to continue forward as, as the tentative budget has projected, there are two items in there. One is the property tax increase for the fire station. Let me grab my numbers here. For the station construction, and we won't quite get into the, this PowerPoint, Nick, we'll get there just in a moment. For the state, for the Station 62, for the last three years, we've adjusted, we've actually held the property tax rate. So every year, the county assesses our property values. And last year, our total assessed property value, this is a huge number, the total assessed property value in Spanish Fork was $2,529,899,806. And I'm sure there are some cents in there. But we'll just take the first few numbers, 2.53 rounding, 2.53 billion dollars was the assessed property value inside of Spanish Fork's city limits. This year, all properties that were assessed last year in January, all properties assessed, that 2.53, have a new assessed value of 2.64, rounding up 2.65 billion dollars. What the county does, according to state law, we received 2 point, I really should have put a slide of this, huh? It'd be so much easier if you could see this. If I had a whiteboard, it'd be even better, way better. So last year, we received in property taxes, 2.5 million dollars. So what the county does is they take our 2.5 million dollars in revenue and they divide that by our new assessed value of 2.6, 2.65 billion dollars, and they get a new property tax rate. Last year, our property tax rate was .000991, .0003 zeros and then 991. With our new appreciated value, so my house maybe had an assessed value of $350,000 and now it's got an assessed value of 375 because the market went up. What happens, they take the new dollar amount, divide it into the new dollar amount, the new assessed value of 2.65 billion dollars, and they get a brand-new property tax rate. So last year's rate of 000991 actually goes down to 000946. That's, that would be our new property tax rate. What we've suggested, three years ago, we suggested holding the rate, not letting it fall, that amount, and put that toward the fire, the construction of, and then the eventual operation of our new station. We, and the idea there was, we are increasing the level of service. We will decrease response times by having a station on the east end of town that will cover calls there. That will essentially decrease response times by about four to five minutes average. Some people, it will decrease response times by, you know, five or six, others, it'll decrease response times by three or four, but on average, about four to five minute decrease in response time, which is an increase in the service level. And because that service level is increasing for everybody, the idea was, let's let everybody have a little bit of ownership in paying for the construction of the station and the eventual operation. So we have been taking the money from these rate holds that have been, the first year was about $145,000, the second year, last year, was about 150. And then this year, what we would recommend, what the budget recommends, is $128,000 because that's what the hold, the rate would accomplish. So a little bit less than we had contemplated, but the idea still is that we'll work with the hold the rate for the station. That money go, will go toward the construction of Station 62 this year. And then next year, when it's all paid for, which we are paying for the construction of this station in cash, it will go into the general fund for the operation. We will have new employees that we'll hire, we'll have more schedules and different people, additional employees that we'll need to hire. So that additional revenue, which adds up to about $425,000, next year's budget, so not this FY 21, but next year's 22 budget, will go towards the operation of the fire and ambulance personnel that we have. Okay, that's one element of the property tax discussion. The second element is what we've discussed about going above the hold the rate for the library. And with that, we'll jump in, Nick, to, to those slides and just go to the second slide, if you would please. So a couple of years ago, two, or last year, just, so I'm not going to talk about the police, sorry, I'm not going to talk about the fire station anymore until maybe the end is kind of a wrap-up. But we'll talk, right now, I'm just going to focus on the library portion of this discussion. Last year, the council decided to begin a study to construct a new library. This has been something that the council has been considering now for about five years. Of course, we put, we had a library concept combined with another recreation center and other amenities in 2015. And ever since then, of course, we've still, the need for libraries has been there and you as a council has instructed us to continue forward with that project, culminating with the formal beginnings of this study to construct a library. We hired an architect, they've been in the design phase, schematic design is where we are at at this moment. We've acquired property. We've acquired the property adjacent to the city office building. Many might know it as the Thurber School Center in Maine. There's a Latter Day Saint Chapel there on the corner of First South in Maine, immediately next door to the city offices. We've acquired that in this past year, paid for that with cash, and are capable of building that, this library facility there. The plan discussed last year was a three-year plan to raise property taxes in August of 2019, August of 2020 this year, and then again next year in 2021. Last year, we raised property taxes 95 cents per month on the average home. And then this year, we will need to raise it some amount and then next year, some other amount. Go ahead to the next slide, please. Let's look at that over two years, what that would look like, the next two years. For the project that we have, that the architects has put together, there are two components to the library, maybe make a parenthetical statement here, there are two components to the library. It's not just a library, there's actually an element of civic offices there. As we've done the study, we have identified a dearth of space in the finance office and lacking of space for the city council chambers. And part of this project does include the construction of new finance offices and a new city council chambers. So the library, the total project is bigger than just the library. The total cost of the library is all we're talking about with property tax. We will use other sources of revenue, other funds, to pay for these components of the city council chambers and the finance offices. And so some in the public might get confused, I don't mean to confuse them, but we'll talk about the library component being about $14 million. There's about roughly 32,000 square feet for the library is what's being programmed, at least at this moment, and that certainly is subject to some refining as we continue forward. But about $14 million for the construction of the library portion of that building. And that's what we're targeting for this property tax. We raised property taxes 95 cents last year. If we're going to raise it over the next two years, then we was, we would recommend raising property taxes this year, the rate of .000108. That would generate, that would raise property taxes $1.56 per month on the average home, and that amount would, would generate about $308,000 a year en route to the bond payment that we would need, about $890,000. So next year, we would need to raise property taxes still again, like we planned over a three-year period, and we would need to raise it .000146, $2.21 a month on the average home. The total increase over three years, remember 95 cents not shown on this slide, the 1.56 and the 2.21 on this slide, adding up to $4.72. We believe that is a worst-case scenario. There are a lot of factors that are in flux right now. The cost of the library is estimated, the cost of construction is estimated, and it has a lot of contingency still because we're months away from final design. And so we believe that number will shrink. How much, we don't know, but we believe it will shrink. COVID has caused pricing to flatten in the last couple of months, which is great, and we hope that it actually may bring rates down. If it does, we, these numbers would be less. Interest rates are going down. When we discussed this last year, our interest rate we discussed was three and a quarter, 3.25%. Right now, we're calculating at 2.75. Our financial advisor reported to both Kent and I today that he just issued a bond, an 18-year bond of a similar type that we would do for 1.7, need to, 1.78, 1.75. It was ridiculous, that, that interest rate. For every half a million dollars that we, sorry, for every half a point, half a percent of the interest rate, if it goes down, it saves us total cost of the project about a million dollars. So we're at 2.75. If we could get an interest rate that is two and a quarter, knock another million. If we could get down below two, it'd knock another million and a half, you know, to almost two million. It's a huge opportunity in savings. If we've decided that we're going to build a library, which as I understand the direction from you as the mayor council is, we've decided that, then we do have an opportunity to take advantage of, of the timing of things right now. All right, go to the next slide, if you would please. Remember, go back, remember that number, go back for a second, Nick. Remember the number on the bottom, 4.72? All right. If we, but what we've discussed in some of our meetings is, should we just increase the rate all at once, not over a two-year period? So if we increase the rate just one more time this year, we go the whole rest of the amount, something interesting happens. The total amount of the bond actually can go down about $400,000. Why? Because you're taking, you're, you have, you have more money this year. The project cost is the same. The construction of the library is about $14 million. The total project with the city council chambers and all the shared space, the entryway and things like that, the construction costs right now are estimated around 18 million. If those costs, which they will, they will go down, I shouldn't have said that number because now that's the only number you're going to remember, but we'll have a presentation actually from those, that team next, next council meeting and they'll refine that, I'm sure, a little bit. But if the, with that amount at 18 million for the construction, every dollar that we spend and every dollar that we generate in this year actually brings the bond amount down. Hopefully that makes sense. If we, if we go the full amount this year, we would generate $880,000 this year instead of the four, or 300 and, what did I say, 307? It's a difference of about $400,000. That simply lowers our bond by $400,000 because we have that in cash instead of needing to borrow it. And because of that, you have that money upfront, you lower the bond amount, the total increase over two years is just $4.68. Now, $4.72, $4.68, maybe that's not a big deal, maybe it is, but it is a difference and the reason it's different is because you have $400,000 in cash upfront. All right, let's go to the next slide to see side-by-side what it would look like. We would potentially raise the monthly rate $3.73 this year or $1.56 this year and $2.21 next year. That's what that comparison looks like. I want to show you something that's kind of interesting. When we, the reason we raised it 95 cents last year is when we had meetings with you, we presented to the public that we needed to raise 100 and, around $180,000 in revenue. And when we got our, our actual property tax numbers for 2000, for the next, for the new year, which we get right now in June, when we got those numbers, we actually only needed a 95 cent increase in order to generate that $180,000 instead of the full dollar. Why that's significant is, there was a decrease of 5%, right? $1 to 95 cents is a decrease of 5%. And that happens every year. If I needed 95 cents last year, the decrease this year is 11%. And so that, that $1 that turned into 95 cents because of the growth that is happening in the city, right? We have more homes, so it's spread amongst more people. We have new businesses that are now in the city, it's spread amongst all those. That new growth lowers my cost by a percent every year. Last year it was 5%, this year it's 11, some years it'll be two, some years it'll be three. So let's, you know, we don't know what it is every year and every year we get those numbers. But if you say on average, I think I put in here 5%, so if you go to the next slide, this just shows the next 10 years. If you say on average, we decrease, we have a decrease of 5% year one, year two, year three, you can see how in the columns, that monthly or annual cost goes down for every home. And this is, of course, based on the average. Some homes are more than this, some homes are less than this, but the concept is the same. And 20 years becomes a little bit problematic for the slide to show, but what's really fascinating is whether we go the full amount this year or the, or we spread it out over two years, at the end of the day, they, both scenarios over 20 years are within about $3 of each other. So I've been doing some, Stacy and I were going over some of these numbers today and I've been doing some fine tuning, but there, it's just about the same, if it decreases on average 5%. Like I said, some years it's five, this year it's 11. And that's fascinating to me. But there is some benefits that come to us by raising it just all at once. If we raise it all at once, we have the funding source guaranteed, now we're ready to roll. When we go to the bonding agency, which is like getting your credit score, we can, we can provide to them, this is the funding plan, the revenues are there, there isn't anything left undone. We'll get a better rating, which could translate to a better rate. Better rate means overall costs go down. If we don't do it all at once, then we will have, next year, we will have to raise the rates in order to satisfy the requirements, and that uncertainty would cause, could cause the rates to, the interest rates to be slightly higher. There is one downside to going all at once, and that is, what if we raise it too high? The numbers that I presented right now are estimates and there is buffer in there. I think and hope we will, at this moment, raise it too high. And if we do, next year, instead of having a Truth in Taxation Hearing to raise the rates, I would suggest we have just the opposite and we true it up and lower the rate. We are not trying to raise the rates just because the, this is specifically to construct a library building. And we don't need to gather more. And so if we go too high, we can true it up next year and we can lower the rate. We have already proven that we would do that, for example, when we, twice, if we have said we needed $180,000 last year for the library, and when we got our new rates, that $180,000 from the $1 increase that we thought we would need, instead of just having it stay at $1, which would have generated, say, $195,000 or $200,000, we lowered it to 95 cents, so we would only collect what we said we needed. We've done that also with the, with the Station 62 project, where we said, all we would do is hold the rate. We had a target of what we thought it would generate, but it didn't, this year, it didn't generate, it didn't drop as much as we thought in that way, so our rate didn't. generate, it didn't drop as much as we thought in that way, so our rate didn't, we, by holding the rate, we only are generating about $128,000 instead of 150. And so I think that is certainly within our, our ability to, if we, if we do overshoot this year, we can lower it next year. And if you have that, that desire and give us that direction, that'll be what we plan for and what we follow as we track costs for the project and, and identify what is needed. So, that's a lot of information and I, I'm hopeful that some of that made sense. So I can answer any questions and at the end of the day, what Kent and I need from you is some direction for putting together our truth and taxation notice. If we're going to raise property taxes, we have to, I think it's next week, right, Kent? We have to next week, submit to the county what our rates could be. And it's kind of a parameters resolution, what's the highest we are going to go? And, and I would suggest numbers like what we've talked about here. If we're going to do it all at once, if we're going to do it over two years, numbers like I put in the two-year, that two-year scenario. Would you go back a slide for me? Thank you. But then we can put that notice together. In the next couple of months, before the August truth and taxation hearing, we should be able to refine this and, and that $3.73 or that $1.56, I expect will come down, maybe even as much as a quarter, 25 cents, just depending on how things true up in the next couple of months as we continue forward. But this would set our parameters for, on the outset, what our, what our tax rate could look like for the library portion. And I don't necessarily need a motion from you, but I do, we do want some direction from you.
I'll make, well, it's not a motion, but I would recommend that we move forward with the truth and taxation and do it all this year.
I go along with that. I think that's a good way to do it. I think it can save us some money and we can tie in that low tax or interest rate because who knows what it'll be next year and the year after that.
I don't know if we had that idea in the first place, but I think it's a great idea.
We'll give you props, Brendan. So you've got your direction.
Okay. Kent, anything else you need there?
No.
Anything I left out?
I should say not.
We'll just come back, but you know, we'll let you know what the notice is going to look like. It'll be, I'll translate for you.
Yeah, what he just said is that we'll, we'll let you know what that, what that amount, what those amounts will look like specifically and how those notices will eventually come out from the county. It seems like those hit homes by mail sometime around the 24th of July. It seems like it, yeah, gets into their mailboxes with ample time for them. We will select our date for truth and taxation hearing, which should be on August 4th. It should be. If somebody else has chosen that date in our area, that could potentially compete with our residents and the county would bump us to some other date. But it should be on August 4th, which is our, oh, have you already? Thank you, Kent. So it should be on August 4th, which is just that first meeting in August. And we'll proceed forward to notice the, the amount all at once and we'll get you those rates so you can see what those are and what that would look like in that, in that truth and taxation hearing. Now you know what TNT stands for.
Great.
Thank you, Seth.
All right. Let's, need a motion to adjourn to redevelopment agency.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scoob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved and signed.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor? Adoption of the FY 2021 RDA budget. Lot of budgets today.
Trust me, I'm, a lot of budgets the last three weeks, four weeks. We've already had a public hearing on this, so this is not a public hearing. The city budget of '21 was adopted as a tentative budget and now, since we got direction, that adoption of the city '21's budget will be on August 4th. So we've moved, we've talked about that. But the RDA is a different hat you wear as being the redevelopment agency, and that budget for '21 will be adopted tonight. We had the public hearing two weeks ago, and so this budget that you're going to adopt tonight is for just the RDA. This is a depiction of the RDA areas that we have, that we have funds in. Over the last three years, three RDA areas have closed, they've matured to the end of their useful life and have closed. We have one called North Industrial. It still has funds in there from increment that's been collected over 20 years. There are some great improvements around the airport on Main Street and some of the areas, down in the north industrial area that's kind of got, there's about $2 million in that fund that can be used in that area, so it's exciting to see what we can do there. Kirby Lane was created 20 years ago. It's where Hedro is, there's been lots of different names, Alumax, Crosona, I don't know, Alcoa, Kirby, but it's all in that area and that one has been retired and all the funds have been spent out of that one. So those funds now continue on to the, to the taxing entities like the school district. The Corona CRA is the sales tax one, it's not have anything to do with property tax, has to do with sales tax increment in the Canyon Creek area with Lowe's and those stores are out there.
I think we need to make sure that the public understands. He said Krona, not Corona. K-R-O-N-A.
Do we know what that means?
Mr. Icelandic, what would that mean?
That's a, a doll, that is a monetary amount in Iceland.
So it's their, like the US dollar or the ruble in Iceland, the Corona is the, their monies, their denomination of money. Very good. I'm trying to, the Sierra Bonita, CR, is it CRA on that one? CDA, that's which acronym it is. That one has to do with the young living area and increment that goes back to the young living area based on their development of employment and business. That's, that's the active ones that are, that do have money. So right now, there's only one collecting property tax increment, which is the Sierra Bonita. The Windmill one is closed, there's a little bit of money left, 140,000 dollars left in the Windmill one, but it is not collecting any new increment at that time. So the RDA budget that you're adopting is the budget for the funds of all those different areas within our redevelopment agency. Here's kind of a map of where these areas are at. The Windmill one is up here, the Crosona is around, the Kirby, I mean, is around there, North Industrial. There are some other RDA areas that have not been triggered, but they are ones the council has created for different areas around usually our commercial or industrial area. So zoom in area of the North Industrial, Kirby and the Corona one. And again, that's the budget. So the budget that you're adopting is 1.477 million is the, the total of those areas in this last column here is the total budget for the RDA. So it's not a public hearing right now, it's just this one last time that you get to adopt this budget for the FY '21 budget.
Any questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move, we approve adoption of fiscal year 2021 RDA budget.
A motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to reconvene back to city council meeting.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion items? See, none?
I move, we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and transaction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scoob.
And what? And personnel.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for everyone being here and watching us, so.